Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting for June 15th. As is customary, we will begin with an observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a rather busy agenda, but we would like to start with David Weisnig. But before David speaks, I just want to give a public welcome back to Sally Nguyen. Good to have you back with us, Sally. All right, David, pause was not for you, but go ahead.
Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. Ladies, Dave Weisnig, 40 and 10 Gap with a back to the Gap report. We are pleased that we've had over ninety-four thousand persons straight on the Gap already this year. Our normal load, which has kept us in the top most heavily-used installation, is right around one-hundred-and-thirty thousand, so we are rapidly reaching that point already, so it should be another banner year. Sally is our neighbor, and so I'm going to read off what's going to keep her awake at night. Well, hopefully, we won't fire away into the night. Our lab training is going to be from the thirteenth through the sixteenth. That's going to be with water, pot, fire, excise. We're going to pick it up again on the sixteenth through the twenty-first of June. And then we're going to finish the month from the twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth of June with field artillery. So residents in the area, please bear with us as we get this critical training done. We want to announce that we are getting ready to start our annual butterfly tours for the regional federal area butterfly. 40 and 10 Gap is one of the few places in the United States that has it despite all of our military training that occurs. It is going to, the dates that we have announced are going to be on June 30th, and July 1st, the 7th, and the 8th. It's going to meet down at our recreation center, which is on the corner of Fisher Avenue and Asher Minor Roads. It's a place where it's always been. If somebody wants further interest, they can go to our Facebook page, 40 and 10 Gap. We have links that will lead you to all kinds of good information on that. That is roughly all we have today, sir. If you have any questions, we'll let you get on with your agenda.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. And before we go to our formal agenda, Sally, I'd just like to ask if Stephanie would introduce the newest member to the Penn State Extension family for Lebanon County.
Good morning. As I said, I'm Stephanie Shark with Penn State Extension. I'm serving as the new Client Relations Manager for Area 9, which is Lebanon, Lancaster, Chester, Spukel, and Brooks Counties. And today I brought along Tara Mondock from University Park in Penn State Extension. She is the new Associate Director of Client Relations, and she will be overseeing some of the new business model and structuring for Penn State Extension. So I just wanted to bring her out to Lebanon County. We've been out to our county extension office, and we're going to be continuing the tour the rest of the day.
Very good.
One of the other areas I would like to highlight for the county commissioners is Dave Swartz has served as our CCAP liaison between Penn State Extension and CCAP for the last two years. So effective July 1st, I'll be taking on that role as a CCAP fellow and be the liaison between CCAP, County Commissioner's Association of Pennsylvania, and Penn State Extension. So I'm honored and proud to take on that role and look forward to working very closely with the CCAP folks in Harrisburg beginning on July 1st.
Welcome, Tara.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I also like the grouping of counties that you mentioned. I think the last time you said that they're the backbone of agriculture in Pennsylvania.
That's what I feel.
You always had that little tagline on you.
Wasn't it powerhouse?
That's what I've been doing.
I remember the word powerhouse. I don't know. I like that word.
Stand corrected, is you correct.
We do D O W agricultural. So thanks again for all of your support of Penn State Extension.
Thank you. All right, Sally.
We had receipts on June 13th and 14th for one million, two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and thirty cents. That brings us to total cash, two million, five-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and seventy cents. Our expenditures this week were two thousand, one-hundred-and-seven, two million.
I was going to say, whoa, what a good week.
We wish, right. Two million, one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, nine-hundred-and-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. The tax claim is forty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents, leaving us a balance of three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and forty-three cents.
Any questions? We seek a motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions?
If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, so ordered. Thank you, Sally.
Hello, Murphy?
Yep.
This is a resolution. I'm opening a checking account at First National Bank of Pennsylvania.
Make a motion to open a new account at First National Bank?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
Sally, you okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, additions, or deletions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Good morning.
How's everybody doing this morning?
Good, Julie. Good to see you. Mercedes, welcome.
Would you like to introduce the guest of honor?
Well, Mercedes is here as our guest of honor because she has decided that she's going to retire from service for the county. We were just talking about the fact that she's actually worked for three different MDJs in her career. She started with Bill Shadler, then she worked for Nigel Felling, and now with MDJ Wolf. And she's done a tremendous job. I told her, three really different distinct personalities. So for her to have survived, and survived well, I think really speaks well of her and the job she's done. I know that Judge Wolf is going to miss her tremendously, but I appreciate the reasons why she's retiring. I think very good reasons, and she'll be able to move on and enjoy life with her family and take care of family responsibilities. Go, we will miss her.
You would like to share a little bit about her history with us through proclamation, Jamie?
Whereas Mercedes, Merce Marrero, began her career with the county of Lebanon, employed as a district justice clerk for the office of District Justice Fowlton on January 15th, 1990. Whereas throughout her many years of employment, Merce served the county with devotion and commitment, providing integrity to her profession. Whereas, Merce served our community through ambition, paying attention to details, and produced unwavering hard work. She excelled as a leader in her management position with leadership by example while performing her duties with a high degree of professionalism. Whereas, Merce performed her tasks and responsibilities in a competent manner, which reelects great credit upon herself, the Lebanon County Government. Whereas, June 24th, 2017, Merce will retire as Office Manager/Interpreter for the Office of Magisterial District Judge Wolf with over twenty-six years of distinguished service. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of all our citizens, unite to thank Merce for her many years of dedicated service on a job well done. Further, we extend congratulations and best wishes for the very best retirement and most rewarding future.
Thank you.
And I personally just want to thank Merce. She's a great representative of the Fifty-Second Judicial District. She really has been, and we'll miss her personally for that reason, but also professionally, because she's done nothing but a great job. And you're one of those people, Merce, that makes us look good, so thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Let's see if we can actually pass this proclamation. I'll seek a motion for it.
Well, I didn't want to stop.
I'll make a motion on Merce's retirement for the proclamation.
And I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so ordered.
Got through.
Very good. Merce, did you want to say anything?
I just want to thank everybody. It's been a great ride. I thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed my job, enjoyed the people I worked with, and definitely miss everyone.
Thank you for your over-a-quarter century of contribution to our county. Thank you.
The look of an eye went so quickly.
That's how it is, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Best of health and longevity in your retirement.
Thank you, and good luck in the future.
Yes, I hope you're well.
Thank you so much.
Good seeing you. Commissioner Andrews, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right, shake those hands. Oh, okay. Is that a family?
I texted him, he says, go.
It's such a long time.
What do you do? You know, it's small. Oh. Walking on it. I was just telling him that.
Yes, yes, we're trading out.
Oh, my God. You want that?
See you, girl.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Mr. Happy, and bye for good.
Sorry, I'm trying to pardon myself.
Charlie. Morning.
Good morning.
Michelle Leder, Director of Community Resources. May I check to get resources this time? Under resignations and terminations, Constance Fomen, Doram monitor, resignation effective June 30th. Lindsay Zacharavich, caseworker two, resignation effective June 21st. Margaret McDonough, Assistant District 21, resignation effective June 16th. Frank Paul Chaney, caseworker two, retirement effective July 1st, with the last working day being June 30th. Leanne Noblock, from Full-Time LPN, removal effective May 22nd. Cheryl Zimba, Full-Time LPN, removal effective May 26th. Adrian Wetzel, Adult Promotion Officer, resignation effective June 16th. Susan Wright, E O two slash DUI Officer, resignation effective June 16th. Joshua Mays, Full-Time Developmental Assistant, resignation effective June 10th. And Courtney Lutz, Full-Time Developmental Assistant, termination effective June 12th.
Make a motion to accept the resignations and terminations as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions with regard to any of those transactions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Under F M L A leaves of absence, Samantha Abila, Promotion Services, six to eight-week leave of absence, effective August 2nd. Rosemary Urban, Children and Youth, twelve weeks of intermittent F M L A, effective May 1st. Christopher Howe, in Sheriff's Office, ten weeks of F M L A, returning June 2nd. Amanda Ramos, from Promotion Services, ten days of unpaid F M L A, returning June 1st.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we approve those F M L A requests and returns? Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Under changes of status transfers and promotions, Jennifer Whitman, transfer from Adult Promotion Officer, Promotion Services, to DUI Court Coordinator in the District Attorney's Office at the rate of one-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty dollars and seventy-one cents by weekly, effective July 3rd. Cynthia Costa, promotion from Team Clerk in Domestic Relations to General Clerk A in Domestic Relations at the rate of nine-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents by weekly, effective June 19th. Huggins Jane Elliott, promotion from General Clerk A in Domestic Relations to Medical slash Locate Officer in Domestic Relations at the rate of one-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and eighty cents by weekly, effective June 19th. Altesha Coward, promotion from Docket Specialist in Domestic Relations to Team Clerk in Domestic Relations at the rate of eight-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents by weekly, effective June 19th. Sarah Shirk, promotion from Medical slash Locate Officer in Domestic Relations to Intake Officer in Domestic Relations at the rate of one-thousand-four-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and fifty cents by weekly, effective June 19th. Daniel Walsh, promotion from Corporal at the prison to Sergeant at the prison at the rate of twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents per hour, effective June 19th. Anthony Hornberger, promotion from Full-Time Correctional Officer at the prison to Corporal at the prison at the rate of twenty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents per hour, effective July 2nd. Jordan Brin, change of status from Part-Time Developmental Assistant after removal of the center, to Casual Call Developmental Assistant after removal of the center. No change in their rate, effective June 22nd, 2017.
Make a motion to approve the changes of status as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so ordered.
Under other transactions, I have a motion to approve Treasurer Sally Nguyen's request to have M Colette Arts and Renee Lenke work in her office for six to eight weeks, effective July 10th, as well as have her current staff, including Linda Spicer and Tax Claim, if needed, work an additional five hours per week for the same time per AM to assist with dough licenses.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that request. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Children and Youth would like to hire Morgan McMohan as a caseworker two at the rate of one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and ninety-two cents by weekly, effective June 26th. District Attorney would like to hire Benjamin Baker as a full-time Assistant District Attorney at the rate of one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and twenty-three cents by weekly, effective June 26th. District Attorney would like to hire Sean Barrett, or Seem Barrett, as a full-time Assistant District Attorney at the rate of one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and twenty-three cents by weekly, effective July 10th. Information Technology Services Department would like to hire Thomas Boyer as Operations Specialist at the rate of one-thousand-five-hundred-and-nine dollars and eighty-one cents by weekly, effective June 19th. President Judge Tullow would like to hire Christina Ho as a DJ clerk at the rate of seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents by weekly, effective June 26th. The prison would like to hire, rehire Kelly Jo Young as a full-time Correctional Officer at the rate of thirteen dollars and ninety-eight cents per hour, effective July 2nd. And the Pathonataries Office would like to hire Sherry Small as a General Clerk C at the rate of eight-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and twenty-two cents by weekly, effective June 19th.
Make a motion to adopt the hiring.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Moving on to salary board. Motion to approve all transactions previously read, plus the following. Erin King and Serena Strauss, incremental increases, telecommunicators in the EMA department at the rate of sixteen dollars and nine cents, both effective May 7th, 2017. Gianna Pistone and Bradley Ebling, incremental increases, both telecommunicators in the Emergency Management Agency Department, both at the rate of sixteen dollars and seventy-three cents per hour, both effective June 18th. And Todd Hirsch, salary increase detective, to the rate of two-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and fifty-five cents by weekly, effective June 18th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we approve those salary board requests. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
For mandated conference seminars, Deke Luwaki from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the Volunteer Onboarding Process in State College, July 6th. Lodging, Mileage, Meals, Parking, Tools Reimbursement, mandated by PDA. Jeff Bowler and Deanna Bascher from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the Victim Services Symposium in Amblur, June 27th. Mileage, Meals, Parking, Tools Reimbursement, mandated by PDA. Anna Marquest from Children and Youth would like to attend the Parapetory and Beginning Phases of Child Welfare Supervision in McCanningsburg, July 24th and 25th. Mileage, Meals, Tools Reimbursement, twelve credits, mandated by DHS. Brittany Gardner and Rosemary Urban from Children and Youth would like to attend the Ethical Engagement and Service for Children and Families With Hearing and Vision Loss in McCanningsburg, July 10th. Mileage, Meals, Tools Reimbursement, six credits, mandated by DHS. Jessica McTavish from Children and Youth would like to attend the Caseworker Safety and Responsiveness in Child Welfare Practice in Amblur, July 6th. Meals Reimbursement, eight credits, mandated by DHS. Ruth Snyder, Lily Morales, and Donna Gaffroy from Community Action Partnership would like to attend the Work Ready Training in Amblur, June 29th. Mileage and Meals Reimbursement, mandated by DHS and Bureau of Employment Programs. Brianna Rayner from M H I D E I would like to attend the Pediatric CPR and First Aid in Lebanon, July 13th. Twenty-five dollars total registration fee, Mileage Reimbursement, five credits, mandated by OMDAL. Suzanne Miller from Promotion Services would like to attend the Supervisor's Call as Trainer and Coach in Harrisburg, September 11th. Ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents total registration fee with Meals Reimbursement, six credits, mandated by PDPP. And Sally Mary from Promotion Services would like to attend the July Executive Board Meeting, Juvenile Chief's Council, and hearing, July 20th and 21st. Lodging Reimbursement, mandated by J C J C.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those mandated conferences. I just have a question about Rose Urban. Is that during her sevatical, her F M L A time?
Yeah, her F M L A is in July.
Nice, okay. Gotcha. Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
And a requested, Phaedra Burton from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the Volunteer Onboarding Process in State College, July 6th, with Lodging, Mileage, Meals, Parking, Tools Reimbursement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we approve that request. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Carl Wensler, Jason Lykel, and Ben Polinski from EMA would like to attend the Southeast PA User Group in Montgomery County, June 28th, with Meals, Parking, and Tools Reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we approve that request. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
And Carl Wensler from EMA would like to attend the Educational Mythology with Fire Service Instructor Training in Bucks County, September 11th through the 15th. Lodging, Meals, Parking, Tools Reimbursement.
Make a motion to approve the requested EMA conference attendance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jamie? Goodness, I hope I could see you.
My gentlemen, introduce yourselves for the courtesy of the visitors.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Schrum. I'm the administrator of Lebanon County Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Prevention Program. I am Kim Dunn Boyer, the Director of Lebanon County Drug and Alcohol Commission.
Tim. Dennis Good, Physical Officer for both M H I D E I and Drug and Alcohol.
Welcome. Thank you. We have a number of items to present to you this morning. The first is our list of Provider Contract Amendments for the fiscal year that will be ending in two weeks, fiscal year 16, '17. As we do quite often throughout the year, we have situations where an individual needs more units than was originally prescribed, or we have individuals choosing a vendor or provider, which then in turn forces us to change the contracts. So for the remainder of this fiscal year, we have total changes. We have sixteen contracts changing for a total of seventy-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. This money is, to pay for these services, is within our existing budget, so there's no increase in cost to the county commissioners for those. I don't know if you have questions on any of the particular contracts.
I'll have to hear your motion.
So moved to accept the changes in the sixteen provider contracts.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Thank you. Moving into the upcoming fiscal year, we have our contracts for 2017, 2018. That fiscal year, of course, begins July 1st. These then are all new contracts with our providers. Providing with a long list of them, and then that certainly leads us into a brief discussion of our budget for '17, '18. Our fiscal staff put together a summary for us, and you can see that our total budget for '17, '18 is eight million, eighty-three thousand, and ten dollars. That is an increase of one and a quarter percent roughly from the fiscal year, which is just ending, an increase of about a hundred and two thousand dollars. We had, it increases a hundred and two thousand, like I mentioned. There's some individual programs, or the mental health, or ID, or EI, had varying changes. We have an increase of two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars in our mental health program, and much of that increase has to do with the Fair Weather Lodge that we're beginning, and another housing project called New Start. Those are funded through reinvestment dollars, so those are not county dollars. Actually, the expenses for our intellectual disabilities program decreased by about two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, so that was almost the wash between mental health and ID. And that's, that decrease is generally due to our sports coordination and those services being done by private providers at this point. And earlier intervention is up to about ninety-two thousand dollars. We had some service increases, and the remainder is due to general salaries and changes. What that does in total is really disavowing the ninety-five thousand dollars, a deficit of ninety-five thousand dollars over last year. However, at this point, we don't think that necessitates any request for an increase from the county commissioners. We think that's the usual idea. Please remember, I should have said this upfront, we don't know what the state budget is. No one does at this point for the fiscal year when starts to begin, so we had to work anticipating a flat budget, and at this point, we hope it's a flat budget as opposed to a cut. We certainly welcome any inquiries, but at this point, we don't project that we would have to execute for any additional funds and any services that we have.
Very good. I'll have to hear your motion.
Okay. The motion is to approve the budget and the new contracts. Seventeen, eighteen contracts.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Pretty straightforward. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next one. We always maintain a contract with Pennsylvania's Office of Developmental Programs. That is for our intellectual disabilities program. We are what's known to them as the administrative entity. We are the provider of that program on a countywide basis. So we maintain a contract with them to ensure that we're meeting the standards that they prescribe. We've done this for decades. Generally, when they enter into a new waiver agreement with the federal government, they generally update the administrative and the operating agreement to have us reflect those changes. So we have a regular routine agreement to continue to provide those services here in Lebanon. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we approve the requested administrative entity and operating agreement. Any questions regarding that motion? Any questions regarding that motion? Hearing none, no one in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same signs, so moved. Just remind me where we are with the block grant.
Had approved.
It's all.
So that's.
That's the next agenda. I could still be very fine. In answer to your question, Commissioner, we had applied for, as you know, we had applied for human services block grant back in January of this year after meeting a few to express our interest in human services block grant. So we had completed that application, had submitted it, and waited some period of time, and then were told that they wanted more information from us. So we went and approached county departments and offered more information, updated our application. And on June thirteenth, which was earlier this week, we had got official notice that the block grant was approved for Leaven County. So we are now in block grant county.
Congratulations, it's such a long time coming.
Yes, it did take quite a while. We were, we were trying, we were sort of stressing over our human services plan, which had to be submitted, and the county submits a human services plan, and the plan components are different for block grant county versus a non-block grant county. So we were trying to do that and meet the deadline, which I think was June, or July seventh. But it was very difficult to do because we didn't, we were going to be submitting. We spoke to the people at the state and they said, if you're, if you're, if you're applying to be to block grant county, the deadline is delayed. So we had to put it, we had it nearly done, but put it on the shelf until we heard. And then again, we heard this week that it's approved and we have, I thought they were giving us thirty days, but I was told they're giving us sixty days. So it won't take us long to update the budget sheets. And we had already done two public hearings for it, which was required, how to apply. A non-block grant county is required to have one hearing, a block grant county is required to have two hearings. So we did, we just had the two public hearings anyway, just to be safe, so that works. We took to make some adjustments to the budget sheets and some of the commentary that we did.
It'll be interesting to see how your funding comes through.
Yes.
With the dire situation that they are facing up there.
Yeah, I think it's very good for us considering, you know, what we're hearing about the state budget, I think it's very helpful for us to shift funds again. And, you know, the big part that we see is that, and is that ability to shift. And exactly the way I put it in the letter, we'll be able to shift, flexibly allocate funds to identify, kind of locally identify needs. So that's exactly what we wanted to do, is to work together as departments in the county and ship the funds to meet the needs of the community.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, I guess you're getting to my question, I guess. You still need to know what your final bottom line is going to be before you can divide the pie.
Yes.
Do you have kind of a working format in terms of percentages and things like that to work from, or does all that need to be worked on now?
No. What we'll get, after this letter, we're anticipating to get a letter from the state that shows which, I mean, as you know, we have various pots of money in these various departments. Only certain ones are allowed to be flexed and transferred. What our plan initially was, was to, as we work throughout the year and get closer to the end of the fiscal year, see where the deficits are, try to backfill those deficits instead of sending back funds to the state. And eventually we'll be able to collaborate and really identify some new services that we can provide, human services, whatever, and we'll collaborate. So for the meantime, we're not going to re-allocate money in front. Throughout the fiscal year, needs, each department can change very dramatically, the ballast happens, you know, the opioid overdoses and so on.
I was just gonna add that, John, there's only two pots of money in our office, drug and alcohol, that would be effective, but we have block grant county. One's called BHSI, one's called Act One Fifty-Two. Those monies will be part of that block grant. So like you said, flexibility. So for example, if our office, and this happened the past two years, we're unable to spend the One Fifty-Two money, the way it works now, you send that money back. Now that we're block ran, come July first, end of next year, if my office still has fifty thousand, sixty thousand, you don't have to send that. I can look at my counter parts, kept in his office, where they have a deficit, that might not apply. There's the flexibility. So it's good thing that I sent that, gets my office person to send back the past winters. And that's really the last thing we want to do, to provide more services for the folks. And just so it's clear, these monies are specific. It's not that anywhere else in county, there's not even, for specific reasons, are sent back.
I feel closer, thank you for sharing.
Thank you. So only items I had, I guess I had.
Before Kevin finishes, could you just give a quick Fair Weather Lodge update? You and I spoke, yes, we have to him briefly, but if you could just pass that on.
Sure. As you know, we've been trying to get the Fair Weather Lodge started for some time. We ran into some delays and only way, and finally started, what I'd say, county meals in terms of the fiscal plan, just a couple of months ago. Our original implementation date, our opening date, had been January first, twenty seventeen, so we had to push that back. So we looked at July first as an implementation date. And that was pretty impressive, but we wanted the contractors to work in an aggressive way and push them to, or to get things moving, to keep them moving. So anyway, answer what Jamie was talking about there. I go there periodically to assess the progress and also let them know that I watch out. And they've made an awful lot of progress for very good progress. They've backed the onsite manager, who's saying that his boss was talking about it. Actually, they walked through this Friday, and he told me, you took it this Friday. And I was amazed because they, they got the major work done, and they got a lot of pen and, you know, to do. So he said that the boss was talking about a walk through next Friday. So it'll be very nice. I'm still skeptical about next Friday for the walk through day. And things won't happen July first, but that was a target date, we never had a problem to meet that. But we met with the provider again this week. They had a great meeting to announce some of the details, some of the steering work we had, and some of communications and so on. The place looks very good. The team is over there, so they're doing a great job. The air conditioning is installed, they're cool. They're putting a health system in for the remainder of the building, like scary company that they put in Florida. Bedroom fixtures, they've wired Jamie and Cindy's dining room, it's fairly big, but the kitchen is tiny. They opened up the archway to combine, to extend the kitchen pantry into the dining room. It's very open and very, very nice. We did have a scare when we had a fire across the alley. But fortunately, we only had very minor damage. We had a couple of little things broken in the bathroom on the first floor across the alley. They just had paper tears. So we're very fortunate. Certainly, the firefighters were served with recognition for continuing that, continuing anything from our building. Jamie and I were actually out on the roof after the fire because we saw photos in the news of the firefighters standing on our roof to fight the fire across the alley. There was no damage, so we're very fortunate for that as well. So, so we expect things to really start progressing and coming together in a very short period.
Kathy, can I owe you a vote on the motion? Are we good?
Perhaps I should know this, Kevin, but refresh my memory. The referrals for this come from where?
Well, they would come through our office. But they would come from a variety of sources, you know, from providers. They were supposed to be hospital, and so on, you know, open cases on the front. So we know who we're seeing with the service, and who would be appropriate with the service.
Can our Lebanon residents give them priority?
It's designed for Lebanon County residents, yes.
Are there established criteria of selection of residents?
For basics of their wellness, yes. But in the end, when this thing is up and running, there will be established criteria in the rules of the house and so on. But the residents of the house will make the selection as to whether a referral is accepted or not. They get the choose or they don't. But there will be basic criteria and standards. They have to be, you know, sure that they're well enough to be there and they're contributing to their home.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much. Man, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here representing Drug and Alcohol. I have two items on my agenda today to present to the commissioners. The first thing I'd like to present to the commissioners is the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen provider contracts. Our office has provided each commissioner, Jamie, with a copy of all our contracts for two seventeen, two eighteen. It's a total of ten pages. I would ask that the commissioners put their attention toward page eight. The only change in the ten pages that the commissioners have not seen to this point is the only page eight. And we have a new provider listed. A new provider we will start contracting with July first, and it's Team Challenge Training Center. Team Challenge, I'm unaware of how much you know about Team Challenge, but traditionally it's been based. However, they underwent some changes at Team Challenge, and they are now DDA approved for detox, adult detox, as well as adult rehab. It's a change. This is not a faith-based program, either one of them. The good thing about this, the exciting thing about this, the adult detox, they have twenty-eight beds, and the adult rehab, they have eighty beds, which is, in our situation, we're always looking for resources. They're in Rursburg, PA, which is not far away from us. They provide transportation. So this, this provider is ideal for us, for Leaven County to have a contract with. So that is the only new provider on this ten-page document that you have. And I'm excited, again, for the amount of bed capacity that they are adding. They also will allow someone who goes to detox and rehab to transition into their long-term more faith-based program, which I can use two years. So the opportunity is pretty, seems pretty, through down there at Team Challenge right now. The per diem, two forty a day for detox, one fifty-nine a day for rehab, is pretty much what we're failing to provide, which is satisfying that we're twenty-eight. So I would ask that the commissioners accept the summary of the contracts for two seventeen, two eighteen.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approved the two thousand seventeen, eighteen fiscal year budget. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same signs, so moved.
Okay. The second item I'd like to draw your attention to is the two seventeen, two eighteen budget summary for the Leaven County Commission Drug and Alcohol Use. Our budget this past year, if you look at page three of the handout I provided you, and it is, the handout was actually provided to me by Dennis at fiscal. So I did not create this document, and I'm thankful that Dennis and his staff were able to do that.
Disclaimer noted.
Disclaimer noted. That disclaimer could end bad, Commissioner. Two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, our budget was one million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. In fiscal year two seventeen, two eighteen, the budget is listed at one point, two oh six, eight eight seven, which is an increase of only thirteen thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars, which signifies a one point one five percent increase. The increase of thirteen thousand dollars primarily was driven up by souring benefits, for the most part. Other things in our office, as far as administrative costs, prevention costs, treatment costs, those all, some went up, some went down. But at the end of the day, it will be thirteen thousand dollars that we'll be needing for next year. As well as revenue, there was changes in revenue, there were good and bad. The bottom line is, again, we're not looking for county support in any way. Thirteen thousand dollars that we're projecting will be over, will not be issued. We manage that, issue that, we still need to provide, so we see that we'll provide it this year, next year.
Check it out. Thank you, Debs.
Make a motion to approve the presentation by Mr. Dunwoyer to increase budget by one point one five percent.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions?
Yeah, I guess there's restructuring in the state impacts, or not, are you?
I believe.
We're talking about the consolidation?
Yes. Is that, is that impacting that yet? We will be impacted, how, I'm not sure. Just like, we're gonna be impacted by the budget, how, we're not sure. But it not only affects our office, but it affects the aging, the involvement, mental health. We'll be under one umbrella again. Historically, I wasn't around for this, but apparently historically, drug and alcohol was under that umbrella in the past. And then drug and alcohol broke away from that, it started our department, Drug and Alcohol Programs. So now it seems like it wants to back up to that umbrella. I know there's a lot of other reasons for it. If you listen to one side, there's a lot of reasons against it, if you listen to the other side. As far as I know, sitting here today, it's not a dumb deal. That's where some folks want to see it added. So how it affects us, I can't really speak to that right now, but it will have an effect.
Maybe for you administratively, but for the services you're rendering, shipping, transport.
Correct. I mean, there may be administrative director issues, bringing with a new system up in Harrisburg, a new consolidation framework. But as far as what we do in our office, what we provide to the public, will not change. It'll be business as usual, or my caseworkers, and what we do.
We have, wish you a second. I would.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay. Any other things?
No, sorry.
All for me? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
As always, thank you for your support.
Great.
Thanks for following up. Sorry. That's right.
Right. You'd like to introduce yourself and then proceed.
Good morning, my name is Dan Wright, I'm the chief county inspector of Leaven County in the District. This attorney's office is applying, applying for a impaired driving grant for, it's a grant is for twenty-five thousand dollars. Grant allows us to perform impaired driving enforcement initiatives, specifically static DUI checkpoints, road patrols, and cops and shops operations. The static checkpoints are the checkpoints you would think of when you hear DUI checkpoints or a checkpoint that's set up at a specific location that briefly stops traffic in particular directions to see if you can ascertain if anybody's impaired. The road patrol.
If you're all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so moved.
The second item is the first listing of our contracts for the new fiscal year that begins July 1st, so that will be our 2017, 2018 contract year. We have forty-four contracts with various providers, and these services are valued at one million, one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Most of the contracts seem to continue at the same rate that they are currently at.
I make a motion to approve the contract list as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approved the 17, 18 contract providers list. Any questions? If you're all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so moved. Which?
Go ahead. I think I have, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, we have some, there's some changes to the advisory council people are leaving because they can't, they're not eligible, or they're just leaving in the next year.
Right, right. We have a fifteen-member advisory council, which we are required to have, and we try to stagger the terms. Most of the people who are on the advisory council are eligible to serve a three-year term, and they may serve two, three-year terms according to our law laws. So at this point, we have one person who has served two, three-year terms and is eligible to continue. We have one individual who served one, three-year term and decided to continue. We have.
Just name them as you go there.
The member who is ineligible for the appointment after serving two, three-year terms was Fay Fox. The individual who did not wish to continue after serving one term was Ryan Brighter. Two members who served a three-year term and are willing to serve a second three-year term, and that's Abby Byler and Jack Morris Cooper. We have one member who filled in after sparring vacancies and is now eligible for his first three-year term, General Sam Jim Petzke. And then finally, we have two brand new members to the council who would be serving their first three-year term, and those individuals are Evelyn Sights and James Sharker.
Those last two are filling the vacancies of Fay Fox and Ryan Brighter.
Correct.
Okay. We seek a motion to approve those changes in status for the advisory council.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so moved. Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Let's see. Thank you. Carol, come in next. Here. All right. Morning, Carol. Introduce yourself and then proceed.
I'm Carol Davies. I'm the administrator of the area agency on aging, and I'm here for several items this morning. The first item is an amendment to our 2016, 2017 list of provider contracts. This fiscal year ends on June 30th, but we have got an amendment to propose, I need one contract for six thousand dollars, and then that request to the commission county support for this particular contract.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approved that six thousand dollar contract amendment. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so moved.
The second item is the first listing of our contracts for the new fiscal year that begins July 1st, so that will be our 2017, 2018 contract year. We have forty-four contracts with various providers, and these services are valued at one million, one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Most of the contracts seem to continue at the same rate that they are currently at.
I make a motion to approve the contract list as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approved the 17, 18 contract providers list. Any questions? If you're all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so moved.
The second item is the first listing of our contracts for the new fiscal year that begins July 1st, so that will be our 2017, 2018 contract year. We have forty-four contracts with various providers, and these services are valued at one million, one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Most of the contracts seem to continue at the same rate that they are currently at.
I make a motion to approve the contract list as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approved the 17, 18 contract providers list. Any questions? If you're all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so moved.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Nicole.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. For the value of your time. Introduce yourself and then proceed.
Thank you. Nicole Isaac from the district attorney's office. I am presenting a modification for the RASA and ROJO grants. It's a joint grant through the end of 2018. The change was necessitated because we had a change in personnel, and most of the changes relate to, effective February 27th of this year, Leslie D'Angelo was terminated and her replacement started April 10th of this year. The hours funded are the same for the replacement personnel. The, there was a, because of the gap in employment, there were some extra funds left over that we then had to spend between employment and benefits. So we were able to increase some of the benefits coverage that was paid originally. And for benefits, I was actually able to increase the coverage on Jessica Lutz's benefits because of the change. Courtney has less benefits than Leslie did that were originally budgeted, so we were able to fund Jessica's benefits for her entire percentage paid under the grant for this year and for twenty-nine percent of next year. There was a small amount that was then, to make it balance out, put into miscellaneous supplies category. The one additional thing I wanted to mention that I didn't put in my memo, I would like to.
And the work activities services went up to fifty-eight per fifteen minutes. As of this date, these are proposed rates, which are probably subject to change. They had them in draft, but haven't decided on, on, um, confirming that that's going to be the rate they set them out in draft first, and then it's reviewed, and then they'll come back to us with that these were the rates, we're expecting those rates to be the same. So if these proposed rates are indeed confirmed, the adult training services would indicate a thirty-one point eight percent increase, and the work activity service will increase by six point two percent. Now, these proposed rate increases this year are due to the Office of Development and Programs implementing a new initiative, and it's called Community Participation Services. This initiative is requiring facilities like yours to focus on affording people with disabilities, increase opportunity to experience community involvement and integration. In other words, they go to ears, they do their adult training, but they have to take them out into the community to get more community experience, and therefore that's how that was the initiative. These rates are consistent statewide and tiered with like zero to twenty-four percent of community participation at the base level rate, which I just presented to you, and that the rate levels increasing as the percentage of time the person spends in the community increases. So from zero to twenty-four percent, they get out, that's the base level, twenty-five to forty-nine, fifty to seventy-four, and seventy-five to a hundred. So as that goes up, so does the rate. Will be a waiver request will be submitted to the state for any rate increase. And DB Fisher Transportation Services, which provides the daily transportation for eleven of our individuals to go to they program in years. The sixteen seventeen rate was twenty-five dollars and seventy-five cents an hour. I have yet to receive their proposed, their rate for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Haven't received the contract. I went over there personally, and then I gave them a call. And I'm still waiting on that.
So we're gonna, so wait for an actual number?
Okay.
Can adopt it, an unknown, I guess.
I will say that any increase, the waiver request, we will be submitting a waiver request for any increase. And the last one I have is, is with Aztec. They, they provide training and consultation services for the Lenovo Center. In addition to comparing and submitting facility appropriate cost reports, budgets, waiver requests, appropriate state departments. Aztec also prepares and submits our facility budget and pre-apply procedures to the county. The twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen rate, executive rate is a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, the associate rate a hundred, and the administrative rate forty, and those rates haven't changed for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And on behalf of the residents and staff of the Lenovo Center, I express my all we've appreciation for your continued commitment and support you provide for certain people with disabilities since the law is standing and we never want to stand behind them, so we appreciate that.
Would a motion be in order to adopt all of the contract proposed for seventeen eighteen with the exception of Fisher?
Yeah, I think we just don't, we won't list that one until we get numbers back, and then we'll spread that before you. But the one for ears?
Yes.
Is, you said these are, these are proposed, but if, if the commissioners adopt it today, that's gonna be our, that's gonna be our numbers. So I mean, if they, if they come back?
With a lower number?
With, yeah, well, that's, that would be great.
I'm thinking they're looking for a complaint before they say, well, that's what we're charging.
I think that's their procedure, is that they send them out in draft form first, and then it's reviewed, and then it, well, they have till July first. They were supposed to have everything done by June first, you know, so that's how that goes.
So you can adopt that rate today to, in the time to lock it in with them. And then if it changes, you can amend it, or if you believe it's going down, that, that would be very, um, be better, but it would be unusual, I guess, that they're, that they're proposing something and then coming in at a lower rate, I guess I'm not seeing much of that. So either way, you could hold it out and not, and do it later, it would be until after July one, though. What do you, do you, do you feel that they're, that they're planning to come back with a lower number, or?
No, and, and I, I don't expect it to be higher either.
You expect that to be what it is, what's proposed?
If, if there's a change, I will let you know.
And Fisher, she had it invited already.
So if he doesn't, if he doesn't anticipate that changing really, then, then you could lock it in, and that's what we tell, that's what we tell yours, look, it was adopted by the commissioners at that rate, and so you can pass that on to them, and that might, that might, you know, lock it in for them, too.
Lock it for, for yours?
Yeah, so that they understand that, you know, in order to change that, you have to come back in and present it again, so.
And, and if it is changed, I'll have to probably do that because it's statewide, you know, it's one of those things that, that they wouldn't have, you know, I couldn't have a different rate.
Right, but you don't think it will?
No, I don't, I don't see that, yeah, I don't see.
I'll make my motion to adopt all of these with the exception of DB Fisher.
Second?
We've been seconded, no questions on the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved. Thank you, Roman.
Then you might wanna take a hold right after Jim, before, before Steve will just relax. Absolutely, you're only gonna take a moment, right?
Two minutes to put that.
Give to that.
Mr. Voltry.
Mr. Voltry, commissioners of Tubalte directed to amuse services, I'm here to present for your approval, third quarter invoices, the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and cents.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved in seconded that we approve those invoices for the quarter, for the quarter. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Nicole?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The value of your time. Take, introduce yourself, and then go see.
Thank you, Nicole, Isaac from the District Attorney's Office. I am presenting a modification for the ROSA and BOJO grants, it's a joint grant through the end of two thousand and eighteen. The change was necessitated because we had a change in personnel, and most of the changes relate to fact, effective February twenty-seventh of this year, Leslie D'Angelo was terminated, and her replacement started April tenth of this year. The hours funded are the same for the replacement personnel. The, there was a, because of the gap in employment, there was some extra funds left over that we then had to spend, spend between employment and benefits, so we were able to increase some of the benefits coverage that was paid originally, and for benefits, I was actually able to increase the coverage on Jessica Lutz's benefits because of the change, Courtney has less benefits than Leslie did that were originally budgeted, so we were able to fund Jessica's benefits for her entire percentage paid under the grant for this year and for twenty-nine percent of next year. There was a small amount that was then, to make it balance out, put into miscellaneous supplies category. The one additional thing I wanted to mention that I didn't put in my memo, I'd like to make a housekeeping change as it relates to supplies. In the Voca grant, there were money specifically allotted for things like UCM fees. I didn't, when I did the ROSA and BOJO grant, break those out specifically, if I'd like to include the UCM fees, as well as in ROSA or in Voca, there was money specifically allotted for the replacement of laptop computers with the expectation that fifty percent of two laptops would be paid for out of Voca, and fifty percent of one would be paid for out of ROSA, and fifty percent of the other would be paid for out of BOJO. So we have monies budgeted for those in Voca, but not in the other two grants, so I'd like to incorporate. I'm not moving money from supplies or in any other fashion, I'm just specifically allowing it to those projects, because PCCD likes those things to be specific to the vendors, so if you don't have any objection, it doesn't result in the moving of any funds out of supplies or into supplies, it just specifically lists those items, and it's to match up with what's already been budgeted in Voca. If I don't, then the laptop money in Voca may be lost. So it's mainly a personnel housekeeping change, nothing else. The money overall is still the same.
Just clarifying, when you, when you say medical benefits coverage is being adjusted, you don't mean for the individual, you mean the amount that you're able to reverse out of the grant, is you're able to maximize?
Yes, we appreciate it.
We're able to cover more of the personnel costs to the county.
Wanted to be clear about that word.
It's always an awkward wording by putting in the grant, because the coverage to the individual doesn't change, it's just our ability to pay for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the two hundred and thirty-one thousand, fifty-seven dollar combined ROSA and BOJO grant as specified by Michelle. I've been moved in seconded, we appreciate you for our diligence and maximizing the use of money. Sure.
All in favor, the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I have the grant, the, if you guys just sit back down a bit.
Thank you, Nicole. If you have to introduce yourselves.
My name's Brett Allen of Steeple, and this is my partner, Mike Mabstelly of Steeple, Steeple Financial. And we're just, wanted to stop by, give us a follow-up to our conversation we had at our last quarterly meeting about recommending a couple of changes. Two, two things essentially we want to talk about. One is, as the account, as the pension account continues to grow, through the contributions from the county, as well as just growth in the investment markets itself, we want to kind of continue to further diversify that a little bit more, and Mike's gonna talk about that, and some of the paperwork to be handed out there. With that, and then the second thing was, is we have a recommendation for one of the managers that we've been using for a number of years called London Company, which manages small company stocks primarily. We'd like to make a recommendation that we move from them to another manager. Just to give you an idea, they currently have under their supervision of two million, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, is what they have, and that represents about two and a half percent, they're the smallest manager that we have, but that represents about two and a half percent of the assets. Decisions like this, we don't make changes often, but we gather research from our back office, we have a research department that looks at managers, Mike does analytical work, I do as well, and there's different things we look at, we look at personnel turnover at the management group itself, whether they're out of alignment with their portfolio characteristics, obviously investment performance, which is what most people look at, risk analysis, which Mike's gonna address that some, cash flows, whether money's going in or out of the management group, manager tenure, so there's, there's a laundry list of, actually, twelve or fifteen different things, different points that we try to look at before we make a decision like this. So with that, I'll just let you kind of pick your recommendations.
Yeah, real, real simple, London Company had, had, been having some underperformance, as well as, in an effort, I think, to get caught up, took on more additional risk, and that's something in, in our management of the pension plan here for the county that we always look at, you know, trying to minimize risk and get a reasonable return, not always trying to get the, you know, outperformance, significant outperformance, trying to get the best performance we can to take on a reasonable risk associated with that. So we felt this time, it's time to make a change, and what we're recommending is the one at the top that says there being asset management for that replacement. They've been around for a long time. This particular portfolio is founded in nineteen eighty-nine, so they, they have a pretty good track record. I'm not gonna go through this whole report, but I will highlight a couple of numbers that we look at in some of our analytics. Number one is the alpha there on the left-hand side, the alpha would be the excess return that a manager gets over and above their benchmark, and for the last five years, they've averaged four point one four percent over and above, which is a good alpha number. So that, that, that stands out as far as when we're evaluating managers for this replacement. Two other numbers that we look at, standard deviation, standard deviation is, is a simple measurement of risk, which risk you're taking on. In that calculation, you wanna look for a smaller number, so the smaller standard deviation, the less risk you're taking on, and you can see compared to the benchmark, that number is smaller, so that's, that's a good thing. And then the last number I'll point out is the sharp ratio, again, it's another analytical number that we look at. You think of it as a risk-adjusted return, so that takes into account return, but also the risk that you're taking on. In that calculation, you want actually a higher number, I mean, you're taking on less risk in order to get the return that they can provide. So again, another, you know, another nice change there in a positive manner, so. Following pages behind there, you know, there's, page two has some historical information year by year, as well as annualized numbers. I'll just briefly look at the bottom portion of that, because again, this is an area that we really focus on in an effort to manage the county's pension. There's two, two charts at the bottom, upside capture and downside capture. Upside capture is what, what are we getting over and above the, the benchmark return? And you can see both in the three-year on the, on the left-hand side and the five-year. There is a positive, we're getting more than the benchmark, that shows you the alpha that I told them of previously. But most importantly, we're looking at the downside capture. So an example would be if the market was up ten percent, their benchmark, they were up ten percent, we would expect, based on this downside capture, that they'd be down six point two percent. Okay, so we're protecting more on the downside, which is what, well, we're trying to spread that. That's our recommendation, another support for the change. This looks like it'd be a good move.
Take me separately?
Yeah.
Any questions? If you wish, to change the, yes, yeah.
So we're making the change.
So you're starting the recommendation. It's been moved in seconded that we change managers as represented here. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved.
So this is officially a prison board meeting, then, correct? I mean, pension board, they got the P part.
And then the other, the other page that we want to just take a look at, the red mansion, you know, the pension plan, it's used to grow, they explain two factors, you know, if you're gonna make your, your annual payments, contributions, I should say, into the plan, that, that helps, some of the changes that were made in the past has helped, and we've been fortunate with the market returns. So with that, sometimes we look at opportunities to continue to diversify, as they count for us. So what, what we're gonna recommend in this portion is take about three million dollars out of CS McKee Equity. That's a large cap growth manager that we've had, and there's been some underperformance, nothing yet to, to raise our eyebrows at, just talking with the relationship manager, they recognize that as well, but it, that's part of the reason, but also have more diversification, and moving that money over to Lake Mason, okay, Lake Mason Large Cap Growth. Again, we can kind of look at the same numbers, they have a pretty nice alpha number over five years of three point five four percent annually, and that's the excess return that the manager's bringing in over and above what their benchmark is over those five years. The standard deviation is marginally lower, just slightly lower, not, not significant, but again, I think the sharp ratio, again, higher the number of sharp ratio, the, the better, these are taking on less risk, and that, that's no dispute with that. So again, similar story as Newbee, again, trying to manage risk, with the idea that we get some upside capture as well. Again, very similar story, as far as the performance numbers are, they have a very good capture on the three and the five-year on page two, and then the downside capture, again, they're kind of reducing amount of downside that they're, that they're, which is a possibility.
So you wish to move those funds to Lake Mason? Question, or a motion?
I make a motion to approve the recommendation, move the three million from McKee Equity to the Lake Mason account.
Second? Is there a second? It's been moved in seconded, any questions?
Yeah, so, how much does McKee have left?
Around twenty million, seven hundred thousand.
That's one of your larger?
CS McKee, they have the fixed portion, which is our largest account, the fixed income side, and they also have an act of equity in state as well, so they represent just a little less than half of the overall portfolio. So again, the diversification, I think, is important.
It's been moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved. Thank you.
A number of things to add to you. We'll start with a contract I have that Bob Dowd has forwarded and recommended your approval, and that is between the county and MCM Consulting Group, which is for work to be done on a hazard mitigation update, or hazard mitigation plan. Mr. Dowd was here back in March and got your approval just to apply for a fifty-six-thousand-dollar grant to update our plan. Of that grant, this would be fifty-one thousand dollars of that contract with MCM to do the, the late work on, uh, shepherding that, that update, all we know from our agency.
Make a motion to allow the signing of the contract for fifty-one thousand dollars?
Second? It's been moved in seconded, that we support Mr. Dowd's request. Any questions? Any none in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Secondly, this is items from the Action Partnership, first being a contract amendment between the county and the Department of Community and Economic Development, and the amendment is for the Human Services Development Fund contract, which is an annual grant that we get from the state, which primarily, and that, that grant is eighty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars, most of that goes toward crisis intervention, information referral, as cap portion of it, and there's a portion that comes from HID, drug and alcohol, aging, children of youth. And the way they structure this is they did a, originally the contract is, was between January first, twenty fourteen, to December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, and each year they simply do an amendment to it to fund that year's grant. So that's what this is, is the amendment to the original contract to fund the twenty seventeen, eighteen amount of eighty-nine thousand eight sixty. Make a motion to approve the contract amendment.
Second?
It's been moved in seconded, questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved.
There's some driver contracts for Medical Assistance Transportation Program drivers for the, actually for the sixteen seventeen program year, there's only a little bit left in that, but I assume that they'll be on the list as part of the rules right here. They are for Kenneth Goschert, Larry Swiger, and Stephen Putt.
So moved.
Second? It's moved in seconded, we'll be approved those cap drivers. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Received a resignation from Susan Jarros from the Lebanon County Fisher on Drug and Alcohol Abuse Advisory Council, so we have a motion to accept her resignation, she's moving out of the area.
Make a motion to accept that resignation.
Second?
It's been moved in seconded, that we accept Mrs. Jarros's resignation. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Liquid fuels, fixed allocation requests, first being for Richland Borough to be used for salt to be applied in the roads in the wintertime, at a total cost of thirty-three hundred dollars, and they would like to use their allocation of one thousand five nineteen toward that.
So moved. I do want to have one.
Yeah, I have, I have about four, so. And Anvil Township is planning on using their fixed allocation for general road maintenance of four thousand eight hundred and five dollars, and their allocation would be four thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Jackson Township would like to use their allocation also toward the purchase of salt, and they are going to spend fifty thousand dollars, their allocation, fixed allocation would be eight thousand one sixty-three toward that. The last one I have is for West Lebanon Township, and they are planning to apply this to their twenty seventeen line painting project, and four thousand dollars, and their allocation would be seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. Second?
It's been moved in seconded, that we dispersed the liquid fuels monies. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved.
I have two disabled veteran exemption requests from the, from the assessment office. They are for Helen's Crawford, thirteen oh one Old Hickory, Lake Lebanon, and Sanford Newman, thirteen oh seventy, Shali Avenue, Lebanon, they have gone through the application process, and then, and make a motion to accept the two real estate tax exemptions.
Second?
It's been moved in seconded, questions? There are none, none in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved.
And lastly, I have a proclamation for the twenty-fifth anniversary of warm lawn preservation in Lebanon County, and there's an event coming up before that, twenty-third, twenty-third. And there's an event coming up before that, it's the twenty-third, twenty-fourth. So we have that proclamation which, presented with that.
So moved to approve the proclamation for farm land preservation.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we recognize the twenty-fifth anniversary of farm land preservation. Anyone in favor of that proclamation, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved.
And MPO at eleven thirty and still I think a couple of appeals remaining for the second. Excellent, I agree with that, too.